Good afternoon, it is 2:00 PM, February 26th, 2020. This is a workshop between the Board of County, for the Board of County Commissioners. Call this meeting to order, do I have any amendments or to the agenda?
None here, Mr. Chair.
With none, may I have a motion, please?
I need to hear from the chairman of the agenda.
Second?
Second Chair Pash.
Any further discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Got to have mine.
Thank you, Erin, sorry.
My first mistake since the last one.
Next, we have projects, this is Court Appointed Specialist Advocates Service in Curry County. Ms. Schmelzer?
Yes, so the Board discussed the status of CASA at their last, their meeting last week, and they decided they wanted to have a workshop as soon as possible to discuss basically the situation that's going on here from Douglas County, here from the CASA advocates, and then just gather more information, I guess, so they can make an informed decision as to whether or not we should be looking at perhaps taking CASA back, or just starting the initial conversation, is what we're doing today.
And FYI, for the record, Council Huddle's not at this meeting, he had some other pressing legal issues for the county, if we need him, though he is available, we can call him in here, I just didn't want you to think he didn't want to be here, he just has some other things to do. So, do we have someone from CASA that wants to come up and give us a lead-in for this?
Okay, so, you're okay?
Yes, please. Just pull that tallest microphone toward you, and there you go.
Okay, so, I'm here today to represent the CASAs.
Please identify yourself, if you would, please.
Okay, I'm sorry, my name is Lori Lyons.
Thank you.
So, I guess we would first like to make a, just make a statement, and that is that we believe that the kids that we're servicing are in Curry County, and that the volunteers that are servicing the kids are also in Curry County, and we believe that the program should be in Curry County, and it should be run by Curry County. We do not believe that the CASA of Douglas County can administer the program, they, and first of all, let me say, the judge had said something about the dispute, we're not really here to dispute anything, or to create any arguments, or settle any scores, but since that door closed with Douglas CASA, we would like to open a new door that could be a permanent door. And the reason that we don't believe that the CASA of Douglas County can administer the program is that they have their own kids, they have their own volunteers, they need to spend their time with the Douglas County kids. I think there's a lack of understanding of the program, is evident in their actions that they took this month, to close the Curry County office, and the way that they did it. No one was contacted for options, DHS, the judges, Mona, Alina, the advocates, nobody was asked if we had any input or suggestions, or did we even want to take it back from them. The Curry contributions that we can, that the county, that the community contributes to this will go to Douglas, which it was, but they were administering the program. So, now, we feel that a lot of the contributions are going to dry up. The relationships within the community will fade. A lot of the people that are aware of CASA, you know, they do that for the community, I, I'm not so sure that they're willing to give their money if it's going to go to the other county, and yet, we really don't have a representation here. New volunteers, I'm not sure how they're going to create new volunteers to keep the program sustained, current volunteers are going to start losing connections. We spoke with Kathy Bryan of the Gordon Elwood Foundation, and she said that there may not be funders that would be willing to support this program under the Douglas CASA, since it's not really going to be reflective in the CASA of Curry. The letter that you have received from Judge Margolis pretty much sums up what's already happening. We currently have 15 CASA volunteers, some of those people have already quit, turned in their notice and quit, and we have three more in limbo that were down to their last three sections of training, that they're, no one's contacted them, they're just out there flailing. We currently have 70 children recognized, four volunteers in Curry County, and 38 of those 70 are being served, so right now, we're really only serving half the kids that need us, and we see that going down over time. This program is necessary, and the volunteers, we need a contact to work with, we need someone to organize us, to train us, to tell us this, to get us that, to answer our questions. What will Curry County's participation look like? Well, we need to discuss that, the one thing that we know is that the program is self-funding, so there's not a lot of programs out there that actually pay for themselves. And last week, we gave you a little operating statement that kind of showed the fundraising money that was being brought in, and then the expenses. The expenses that we have are a lot less in Curry County than the Douglas CASA. We, our rent is very low, the overhead is very low, utilities are very low, garbage, I mean, it's kind of down to the real basics, you know. It is urgent, we really appreciate that you people have set aside this time for us, we would like to move quickly, there are monies that have been promised for our Curry County that are going to be lost if we don't get on the program and get, I think I gave you a copy of the fundraiser, the big fundraiser that Mona had last year, the Ball, that, that's all on hold. The other county is not doing anything with it, they've called to cancel the contracts, so that just, I guess, goes by the wayside. We handed you three papers last week showing the last transition that was made, and I know this may be super oversimplified, but if we could just change the names and dates on the paper, and turn them around, and turn them back, and take back, you know, the Currys, that would be great. If Curry County does not want the program, which we feel that it would really be a gold star for our county, when you look at the volunteers' time, you look at the kids that are being helped, you look at all the people that participate in it, the help that we provide to DHS, if you put all that together in the year, I mean, that's a lot of effort, and it's a lot of effort that the county really doesn't have to do much with, I mean, the money that we raise will pay for the cost of the program. But if, in case you really don't want that, then we would ask that if you would take us over for maybe a period of time, maybe 18 months, that we could work out finding another parent company, like a United Way, that could take over. I would like to say, though, that that would be the second choice, that we do feel that the Curry County is the right place for the CASA program to be. This program has been bounced around a bit, I guess Orca had it in 89 to 2007, then Curry County had it in 2007 to 2012, then Douglas County had it from 2012 to today. The one constant in that is Mona Chandler, she's been in this program for 13 years, I think her dedication is kind of evident without question as to what we've done, the money she's raised, the amount of help she's given, I'd just like to throw in a personal note there, that all the CASAs met before we came here last week, and I'm a rather new CASA, I'm just starting, being my very first case, I haven't even met the child yet, and we went and met at the library, so, most of these ladies I've never met, other than the people that I trained with, so I was going around introducing myself, you know, hi, I'm Lori, you know, shake their hands, and the hostility that was, I found, because they thought that I was from Douglas County, was, you know, enough to make me want to walk out of the room, I mean, it was like they were in my face, kind of like, and who are you from, you know, and I was like, well, I'm one of you, but I just think that the working relationship between Douglas and Curry at this point in time, like I said, we don't want to bash Douglas County, but it's just not really repairable in any shape or form, and the people don't want to work with them, whether they've already quit, or where they say they're going to finish this case, and that'll be the last one. There's no one better to run the CASA, I don't think, other than Mona, she's currently available for the position, she's without a job at this time. So, can we get to working out how to figure out the, get the Ts crossed, the Is dotted, and get the CASA back to Curry County where it belongs?
I have a couple of questions to start with, why did it get sent to Douglas? Why did Curry County let it go to Douglas?
Well, from my understanding, that happened because of some misappropriation of funds. No? Oh, sorry, I have the wrong one, Mona?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Chandler, could I ask you just a little more brief detail on, little more detail, excuse me, on just what CASA stands for, the Foster Parent Advocates, just so the public has a real good idea why we're here, and what this organization accomplishes for kids, if you would, please, if that's okay, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So, it stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates. Advocates are appointed by the judge, they answer to the judge, they write reports, they're appointed to a child that has come into foster care, because when children come into foster care in the state of Oregon, they're not automatically given an attorney. So, an advocate is appointed to the child, and that advocate is the child's voice.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So, getting back to your question.
Thank you.
The misallocation of funds that she's talking about is happened with Orca, and in 2007, December of 2007, there was conversations between the Commissioners and Orca, which is located in Coos Bay. At that time, there was an agreement, and they relinquished, they, being Orca, relinquished it to Curry County Commissioners.
Correct.
At that time, the Commissioners approached Mr. Duque, who was the Executive Director for the Juvenile Department, he agreed to take the program on, because it was very broken, and he decided that he only wanted to have a three-year cap with building the program back up, getting the advocates going, because what was happening is, is at that time, there was lots of cuts in the Juvenile Department, and what was being forced on them was to have to advocate for certain children that they didn't have the manpower for. So, it behooved Mr. Duque to take on the program, so that there could be volunteers brought in to advocate for children, and that would be children in delinquency or dependency. So, he took it on, he made it very clear to the Commissioners at that time, and he made it very clear when I was hired, that he only wanted to keep the program for three years, after three years, I would need to go and find a new home. So, that is why I started my process in 2000, at the end of 2011, into 2012, I started my process, I went to three different programs, and I ended up landing with Douglas County. At that time, Susan Knight was the Executive Director, and she worked with the County Commissioners and Mr. Duque, and it was a flawless, seamless move, and it was, at that time, was the best thing that could have happened to CASA of Curry County.
So, why do you believe this happened, with the, what's currently happening? Do you have an opinion on that?
Yeah.
Can we hear it, please?
Sure. So, the last two and a half years, Susan Knight retired in April of 2017, the Executive Board at that time had hired a woman by the name of Rochelle Bryant, she was brought in as the Executive Director, she stayed one year, she wrote one VOCA grant, and no monies was being brought in. She left, and then the Executive Board hired within the internal program of Douglas CASA, they hired an ED at that time, that was, had been there for five years, had been working as an internal lead with the Douglas County CASA program, and they appointed him to be interim, and then, I believe it was in January of 2018, they appointed him the Director. At that time, the Executive Board decided to split the Executive Director's roles, and so, the gentleman that was hired, Scott, as the ED, he took care of the financial part, and then there was another woman that took care of the internal part, like the policies and the practices and the day-to-day. Mr. Scott Gilli was the ED at the time, and there was nothing being done, he wasn't pounding the streets, he wasn't talking to foundations, I couldn't get any access to the Board, I'd asked him several times, I had talked to him about that we needed to set some narratives, to write some grants, I always got deflected. So, basically, through all this process, I still continued to flourish, because I worked the program up and had a solid 20 advocates right now, is what there is, and three waiting to be trained. So, through all this process, even though I knew financially we're struggling, I was going out trying to find ways to bring in money, I sent my coworker to learn how to write grants, I took that upon myself, I asked no one, I just started it, and from August of 2019 until January 1, we brought in like $17,000. So, I just, yeah, lots of, no direction.
Well, I want to say, you know, I've been part of one of your, a couple of your fundraisers, and actually, gentleman by the name of Darren Farmer farmed Commissioner Boyce and I out for auction on a couple of your fundraisers, so, we're very familiar with his operation.
Yes.
But...
And he's effective, isn't he?
Yes, he is.
That is why, I get him.
He got a good price for both of us, actually. I guess, two more questions I have. How sure are we that you're going to stay, because I think you're very integral, intricate in...
I'm very passionate about this program. I, you know, I was let go, it was a tough time, I get that, I've moved on, I just want to be here for the kids.
Okay.
That's what the bottom line is.
But, if I could add to that, you know, I asked Mona that same question, you know, what happens when something changes in your life, and, you know, Mona said that she would groom someone for that position, while, you know, she, whatever was the decision that made her decide she didn't want to do that anymore, so, that was another reason I thought if we had it in Curry County, was that that function would happen, you know, it wouldn't just be left to the side.
Yeah, I wouldn't do that.
One more thing I have is, you know, you seem to have done very, very well at running this operation, and I'm just, you know, for our citizens out there, what assurances can you give the citizens that it will, the funding for this will remain viable and funded? I mean, as you can probably guess, the county's kind of stretched real thin right now.
Yeah.
So, we just, you know, I just like citizens to know that here's something else that I believe this Board is eager to look into further, but we need to know that, you know, there are some assurances that it'll be funded.
So, I need to let you know that one of the foundations that was mentioned was Gordon Elwood. They have sunk a lot of money into this program for the last, since, since 1992, they have, it's in the amount of close to $100,000. They have also vested monies in me, and invested continually to do that as well. It is a conversation that is, you ask a valuable question, and the conversations that are going to take place after this will be with funders, because they want to be kept abreast about what's going on. They're vested as well, and I owe that to them to sit down, and whether that looks like all of us sitting down together, that would need to happen, but, bottom line is, I throw a hell of a fundraiser, and I average about $33,000 every year, so, in the last seven years, I've made over $187,000. So, I'm pretty sure that if I continue to just build my relationships, and maintain the program, and serve the kids that we need to do, and show those outcomes, my funders will continue to fund me, I have a little bit of money that, I don't personally, the program has a little bit of money that comes from the state, and there's other means and ways. I have some citizens that have written me $10,000 checks in this community.
All right, Commissioner Gold?
I have a couple of questions, first of all, did Douglas County keep part of the money coming in? Like on your fundraisers and stuff, did all the money funnel through them, and then they kept a percentage, or?
Well, it just all funneled to them, and I paid them $500 a month for them to manage my books, right, because basically, I was an employee of Douglas County, so they paid the bookkeeper and individuals within that office to supposedly write my grants.
Okay, and then another question, you mentioned Elwood Foundation?
Gordon Elwood Foundation.
Were they just funding the Curry group, or were they funding all of CASA?
Just Curry.
Okay, do you have any other grants like that, that?
Yes.
People are just interested in Curry?
Yes.
And the next would be, what would the process be like for us to take it back, if we were to take it back? I don't know what that process is, how long, involved, all of that.
Well, we don't know those answers either, we probably have more questions than we have answers, we'll be honest about that, but those letters that we gave you last time, you know, kind of shows how that process went through.
It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, and so, I think that, and I thought, I thought that Douglas County CASA was going to be here today?
Um, yes, we have Lori and Valerie.
Oh, okay, yeah, so, as simple as they saying, yes, we will, and then pretty much reverse the process.
Ms. Schmelzer?
Yes, so, we'd want to, you know, hear from Douglas County, of course, but there's going to be some process involved, where, you know, do funds have to transfer, what, you know, are there contracts we have to worry about, do we have to get out of contracts, that type of thing. We ourselves don't have those contracts with them, so, that makes it a little easier. From the county's standpoint, you know, there are such things we have to look at, is, just like we're doing with the public health transfer right now, and that is, you know, hiring the employee, finding the location for the employee, making sure we've got the equipment for the employee, the biggest thing right now is, of course, the funding, you know, how do you fund the employee, we're looking at PERS and all the other things that are associated with that, but, it is something, it's, it's nothing, I mean, we've been through the process before, so it's not that difficult for the county. The biggest question for me is the funding, because when I did look at the funding, there was no guaranteed funding, you know, it was grants, fundraising, and donations. What if the grants don't come through, what if the funding doesn't come through, what if the donations don't come through, how do we cover those expenses on a pretty strict diet? You know, our budget is pretty slim, but, it's one of those things I think we have to look at, the strategic plan we just adopted, I think we have to look at and see if it falls within those priorities, you know, is this one of those quality of life things that we are proud to offer our citizens, and go from there and begin the process, but, I think we really should hear from Douglas County to find out, you know, what's involved, and what they would require for a transfer.
Okay, I'm getting back to the employees, right now, you're a 501(c)(3), is that correct?
No.
No, okay, so I didn't know whether it would be like 4-H Club, they wouldn't...
Oh, understood.
Be under the county as far as being a county employee?
Yeah, if, from the county's standpoint, it's a simple, I shouldn't say simple, but, it's creating a department, bringing another employee on staff, making sure we have the resources for that employee, and then, assuming it would be Mona, you know, Mona then runs her program, like we do with all of our other departments, so...
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I really appreciate your experience with the mistaken identity, we do have a lot of friends in Douglas County.
Yeah.
However, the way this thing was handled, it's, it's made a lot of people really kind of go back on their heels, I don't want to pick on Douglas County, because they've been very good to us at the Commissioner level, certainly, and very helpful whenever they're a county five times the size of Curry County, but the bottom line here is, there is a shortage of foster parents, and so when you have people that are willing to go out and volunteer and offer their time, and stand up for kids, and if I heard correctly, 72 children are served in Curry County?
No, or potentially, or potential.
Potentially, about, I'm sorry, that's correct, about half of those, so, it shows you where we are with the shortage and availability of foster kids. This has been a bright spot for Curry County, so, with all we've been through, you know, we look at losing something like this, it's, boy, it really gets your attention, and it has. Director Schmelzer said, what would it take for Douglas County to properly transition this, as one Commissioner, I would, of course, be very interested in that. I just did a little bit of math in the five or six years, is it seven years?
Thirteen.
Ms. Chandler, that you've been, that you've been personally raising funds yourself, and that's averaging about $40,000, $45,000 a year, and I think you highlighted that a little bit. So, with this bright spot in Curry County, and our responsibility to help this program, to help our kids, especially those less fortunate, I, I'm going to encourage the Port, of course, just to push ahead and keep our friends with Douglas County, but be pretty bold in our approach to how to solve this, and I think the first meeting we had with you speaking, this Lyons, and the support that showed up here, I mean, way beyond encouraging, so, thank you, and all the advocates, all the volunteers, and it's just, it's just a big, big plus. As far as the judges go, I didn't, I missed that letter, I, somehow, maybe, did you hand those out at last meeting?
Uh, no.
Okay, I know where they are, but if you, I've got, I've got that on file, so thank you, I failed to read, and I'm not so sure the judges could be here in support today, but I'll, regardless, go ahead.
I think it might be because of, and I'd like to ask if we could to have Douglas County, please, come up to the podium and speak, but I think that's more the...
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for coming.
Sure.
We just want to, as you can tell by the thrust of the conversation, we're just kind of wondering, for whatever reason, Douglas County did what they did, I'm not here to hurl stones at anyone, we would like to know how, if the county decides to, how seamless and easy a transition it could be to transition this back to Curry County.
Okay, I will, my name is Valerie Trout, I'm the Chairman of the Board for Douglas and Curry County CASA, I also am Secretary on the Board of the Oregon CASA Network, which is the state organization that is the umbrella over every program in the state of Oregon. So, part of the process is going to be to go through the Oregon CASA Network, and have them certify that your program meets standards, there'll also be standards to meet through National CASA, which is the organization we all belong to, and so, you'll need to contact the Oregon CASA Network, I can give you those numbers if you need them, and they then would assist you in, in creating the program, the way, you know, to jumping through all those hoops.
Well, the question would be, is if we've already had the program, it was in Curry County to start with, and then, of course, we transfer... to start with, and then, of course, we transferred the, the management of it to, to Douglas. Douglas County already knowing, because you're very familiar with the CASA program here as being its prior director, that, you know, the, the program here is a viable program. Could that help with, you know, letters from Douglas County saying that you believe that if it has continued as it has continued here for years, that it would be viable? Could that expedite the process? Is there going to be a long, is this a long drawn out process or is this a matter of someone just coming in and saying, look, are you operating CASA the same as it has been? We'll come down and verify that and then that's all there is to it?
I would imagine it'd be a meeting or two.
Okay.
And then, you know, you'd have to file for your own, well, you already have your own tax numbers and all of that, but.
My fear is if it's drawn out, we can lose not only volunteers?
Correct.
But we're going to lose kids. And, and for me, that's, that's a line that we're not going to cross.
For us, for us, this is all about serving the kids. And I'll just share a couple of things that have been coming down from the state of Oregon. They've been giving us ideas of what they want us to accomplish in order to get more state funding. And one of those things is to lower our overhead by putting smaller counties with larger counties, to have sections of the country, of, of our state served by one major group and then putting people out into the field, supervisors out into the field to, to train and manage CASAs. So this is something we're hearing from the state of Oregon. We've been trying to get more funds for every county in the state of Oregon for several years now. We have a lobbyist that works with us and last year's letter that came back from the Ways and Means Committee actually asked us, as one of the things, is to reduce overhead and to try to get more dollars to go straight towards serving more children. And that was one of our considerations. Where, where, the OCN itself is working very hard to get more funding to make the program more stable.
Okay. One more question, if you're willing to, if you're willing to answer, actually, it's two more questions. First, are, are there funds that Curry County has given to Douglas over free annual budget and fundraising that perhaps haven't been used that could be returned to Curry County to help fund this to get it restarted?
The finances are separated. Curry County's funds are kept separate, are on a separate spreadsheet from ours.
Okay.
So everything they bring in and everything they spend is accounted for on our financial statement separately from Douglas County.
So upon the split, if, if we were to bring this back to Curry County, would Douglas refund that money then to?
Absolutely. It belongs to Curry.
Because it's 501(c)(3), correct?
It belongs to Curry, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
The other question I have is, and again, you don't have to answer this if you don't want to, but I was a little taken back by the way that this was done, as were our judges and many people in this room. And I guess I'm wondering why, why it happened that way versus a, a meeting and a planning stage that, okay, look, this is going to happen, this is what our thinking is, and maybe getting together and, and trying to work this out prior to a letter like this being sent, knowing that the potential damage to this could be, you know, hurting these kids that are in this county that will, you know, that now face a problem and losing our volunteers.
We have a, we have a tried and true method of working with cities that are far reaching. Douglas County is huge. We go to Reed's Port, we go up to Elkton, we go, I mean, we go up into the Cascade Mountains. We're really familiar with working remotely and having volunteer, or having staff go out to those areas and work with CASA volunteers in that way. So the model that we intend to use is one we already used successfully. And so we don't expect to have any loss in service to the kids because we already have staff that's going to be taking over those CASAs and in fact have already talked to all the CASAs. So they've already been contacted and as of today, around noon or one, we started getting discovery. But the only thing I can say about the way that we did this was, no matter how much we talked around it, there were going to be people that were very unhappy. And we, we actually, we actually contracted with a human resources company that helps us with staff issues, human resources issues, and this was their recommendation. And since we don't have human resources expertise within our program, we hire someone and so we followed their directive.
Okay, one more question, if I could. How many volunteers in Curry County has CASA Douglas reached out to?
All of them.
Since this letter?
All of them.
I see a lot of head mail.
Okay, okay. Let's be, please let's be civil and, and, and good here, okay? Because we are working for the good and, and I would hope that it would be that way.
How were, how, can you speak?
Sir, if you're going to speak, I'm sorry, but I'm going to need you to come up to the microphone for the record, please, sorry.
That's all right.
And identify yourself, please.
Roy Palmer, I'm the interim executive director.
Thank you, sir.
We were led to believe that our, our supervisors have reached out and tried to make contact with every single CASA. So if we've missed some, then we don't have a, a good list. So if we've missed you, then that's not because we haven't tried.
Okay, and if I could, please, not verbally, but a show of hands, how many people in this room have not been contacted by CASA?
If you're named.
A vol, a volunteer, I mean.
He said a letter.
You said a letter.
Yeah, we sent letters.
I, I sent email, yeah, I sent email out in the very beginning, but.
He sent an email out, but we have not identified.
Okay. All right.
So someone hasn't tried to contact you on the phone?
No.
Beth, you, you can't talk from the chair and you know that, okay? So.
That's okay.
You need to come up to the microphone is what I'm saying. Don't.
I received a phone call from staff in Douglas County to verify what my email address was because they wanted to send out a communication about what had happened and during that phone call, I was told, the office is closed. There is no longer a CASA in Curry County. Horrible. File your HR contract.
Sorry. Okay, so do the other commissioners, do you have any further comments or questions?
No, I, I just, we're pretty sensitive to what has happened here and you've communicated it well, so has Commissioner Gold, and, you know, we, in this case, what I'm hearing from this group, even without the support, there's a lot of people that are very strong on their support that couldn't be here today, in the middle of the day, 2 o'clock, and so, yeah, I'm, I'm going to just request the board to start the transition as soon as possible and contact the Oregon CASA Network, and we've already got a little bit of work done there with Mrs. Gilmore. So I, I, I just don't see any risk here that we, that we can't properly, at least, we want to manage ourself on this issue, I believe.
Commissioner Gold?
I just have one other question of you. Did you have other people like Mona out in the field as CASA directors in some of your cities and you cut them off also? Did that happen or did you, do you have any like Mona?
All of our supervisors work out of our Roseburg office and they go out remotely. They all work out of our office. We have a satellite place where they give training in Canyonville, but the supervisor comes from our Roseburg office to manage that group of, of CASAs.
Okay, so I'm going to ask one follow-up question. So because of what the state said that you should be consolidating, so to speak, that's why this process happened?
It's part of the reason. There were a lot of factors, but that's, you know, that, that is one of the big ones.
Okay. Anything further, Ms. Schmelzer?
Can I ask her? I just would like to ask a question, okay? First of all, of both of you, first of all, I, I think, I have to say thank you to Douglas County for taking the program when we needed someone to take the program. Without that, I think we all would have been in a much different situation. So I think we're all grateful that you stepped up to do that. And it sounds like now might be a good time for us to take it back, I'm not sure, but I'm just curious how it will affect Douglas County if Curry County takes this program back? I mean, are you willing to take it? Is this going to be devastating to you? I, I, I'm just, so you would be okay?
It won't affect us at all.
Okay, so you would?
Yes, we keep things separate.
Okay, so you would be okay with Curry County taking the program back?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank you all for coming.
Just to, to kind of reinforce what you said, the reason we're here at all is because you asked their help back in 2012. And I think there's been a pretty conscious effort to try to make this work over a long period of time. And I think it's come to a point where financially, it's not working in the current model. It's just not working in the current model, the way it is. And so what we're trying to do is keep your program alive, but make it, make it viable financially, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thanks for coming, I appreciate it. Okay, what I'd like to do at this time is, if anyone in the audience has comments that they would like to make, to keep them to just a couple of minutes, I don't want to put on the timer and all that stuff, if you would, just keep your comments to a couple of minutes. And also, if someone got up in front of you and said the exact same thing that you're going to say, just please say ditto. I would appreciate it because we are, you know, we are on a, on a time schedule here a little bit. So if anyone would like to come up to the microphone in an orderly fashion and identify yourself, I would appreciate it. And then, like I say, please keep it to a couple of minutes.
Hi, I'm Beth Barker Hidalgo, CASA for three years, next month. I just want to let you know, you may or may not be aware of the work that's been done outside of CASA to support the whole picture here in Curry County. We now have a Curry Chapter of Every Child Oregon, which supports DHS caseworkers and foster families. We're working diligently, I'm part of that steering committee, we're working diligently to support our foster families so that we can present an environment where more parents, more families will become foster households in our community. All of that would be for naught if we don't. I know you, you, it sounds like you're making the decision to move forward with the transition, but I just, I would like for Douglas County folks to understand the passion that we're bringing to this conversation is because we have worked really hard to improve the environment here for our foster kids, for our foster families and for our community as a whole. It's insulting to be, get a phone call out of the blue on a Thursday afternoon saying, we want to verify your email and oh, by the way, we're shutting down your office in, in Curry County. And I, I'm very concerned that our kiddos will not get the representation that they need from CASA out of Douglas County. Lastly, I'd like to let you know that I just had a message from Greg Dalton, who runs Coos County CASA, and to the issue of being flexible and able to reach remote areas, Reed's Port CASAs are asking to join Coos because they do not have, they don't feel they have the support from Douglas County and they don't like to drive 38 to have to go to court. And I mean, there's, there's a lot of nuances to, to providing services to remote areas. We are remote and I think we'd be better off if we had this program local. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment?
I'm Diane Morris, I'm a.
Did you put one of the microphones to you? Thank you.
I'm Diane Morris and an advocate for CASA for the last four years, and I've written a brief letter I'd like to read into the record if you'll allow. Dear Board of Commissioners, I am Diane Morris, advocate for CASA for the past four years. Having a local office with an assessable director is essential for the success of the CASA program. When I was considering a role as an advocate, I told our former director, Mona Chandler, that I have an elderly mother in Canada and make trips to see her a few times a year. She assured me that if there was a scheduling conflict, she would attend a hearing or meeting in my place, and this has occurred a couple of times, and she quickly brought me up to speed when I returned. I asked Douglas County CASA if they'd be able to cover like that, and they said they didn't know. Our local office had resources available such as a book on tribal procedures, children's books about coping with depression or fears to check out and read to our kids. In the past four years, I've gone to the local office two to three times a month to confer with Mona. When I would walk in, she knew what case I was handling, she was aware of the general status, eliminating lengthy explanations, and sometimes she knew the families involved and shared background that was key to my understanding and helping that foster child cope. These children and families are in our community. Because Mona is a longtime integral part of our community, she has a deep level of commitment and caring for these local kids. All the fundraising and donations made by citizens of Curry County need to know that that money stays here supporting the kids in our community. The CASA program here has been flourishing. Please keep CASA local. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have two others, I won't read them, I'll put them into the record if you'll allow it, from Janelle Howard, who is a CASA and Brooklyn City Manager, from Bonnie L., who's a CASA and Director of Every Child, Curry County, and also from Ellen, another CASA, Ellen Castile.
Thank you.
I believe, I believe we received Ellen's is the one that was sent to you by email.
Right.
She said she was going to submit. Should I turn it in to you now?
You can give them to JJ right here. He's the guy, he's the man. Anyone else would like to make a comment? All right, well, that, comments are closed. Comments from the board? I think you've already pretty much said, move, move this along.
Well, I didn't, couldn't, can't make a decision, can we?
No, we can't, but.
Sooner, sooner.
I think it's an important program and I think we'd be remiss if we didn't do something about it. I think we need to really look at the finances because of the pinch we're under, but I think that it's important and we should make every effort to, to take care of these folks.
Mr. Boyce?
Quickly, Mr. Chair, thank you again. I just reached out to the Coos County Commissioners. Yes, if we have the option and we put that together and decide that we can do it all on our own, but I remember five years ago, was it five or six years ago, they, they passed on connecting Curry and Coos County. I just wonder if that might be an option, if there's a need. I just would like to have Ms. Lyons or Ms. Chandler your opinion on that, or I can just give you this information and we can talk about it later, whatever you would like to I get a, I get a sense though that they have a pretty healthy program there, but it's still isolated to just.
Yeah, they do have a healthy program and Greg has been there since the previous executive director there, who was my mentor for a lot of years. I, I, I have to honestly say that the history with ORCA was not good for, for Curry CASA. It's under still the same leadership that I would prefer not to see the program go to, under the ORCA, so.
But you are, you are very confident in ra, being able to raise the funds for this on an annual basis?
Yes, sir.
To support it?
Yes, because I started at ground zero in 2008, not knowing that CASA even existed, and I have so much experience behind me, 13 years of this now. I'm kind of at ground zero. I think I, I, I don't have to reinvent the wheel, so.
So can we ask Ms. Schmelzer to dig into this a little bit this week and possibly get it on the, as an action item for next week?
I can try.
That's good.
Because I don't want to kick the can too far down the road too fast.
You know who gets to do the work.
You guys have no idea, this lady is ama, she's an amazing lady, so. So that's what we will be doing then, is we will be, Ms. Schmelzer will hopefully get some help with someone in the office to, to look this up and do a little work on it. And, yes, ma'am.
My name is Tricia Bartlett Iverson and I'm an advocate for six months, I think, and myself and I'm sure many other CASA advocates would be more than happy to assist in however we may be able to do that. Thank you.
Wonderful, wow. So with that, we are going to direct Ms. Schmelzer to look into this and if we can get it on for the next meeting, which is the fifth?
Fourth.
Uh, the agenda deadline is Friday at noon, so we'll try.
Okay. If not, it'll be on for the following meeting after that, which will be two weeks, yeah.
Yeah.
And you won't be here for that?
I won't be here for that. I will have something on the agenda for next week. I don't know what it is, but I'll have something.
How about this, you get it on the, the docket and then fill out the, the papers a little later before next Wednesday so we can look at those.
Yeah, if, yes, if I can, you know, I'd like to meet with Roy and Valerie after the meeting, if they're still here, I can't see if they're still here.
They're back there.
Just to kind of talk about the logistics of a transfer and things of that nature and.
and, you know, if, if nothing else, we can at least get an intent letter approved or, or an order on the docket for next week to show our intentions to take the program.
Well, and that's good that they're here, so that you can...
That would be very helpful, to have a letter of intent or something like that, that you are willing to do that. Yes, sir?
My name is Marty Groden, I'm a CASA, recent CASA. I just have a question about, um, the process and how long... I mean, obviously, there's a lot of passionate support here, they've all come, you know, from Brookings many, and, uh, I just wonder how long it's going to take for this process to unfold. The reason I'm asking is, uh, obviously, with this abrupt transition, uh, everybody's up in the air, uh, a lot of doubt, a lot of feelings, uh, but the main thing is, we don't want to lose CASAs, and we don't want our kids to suffer because of going through too many bureaucratic hoops. So I'm just curious as to how long you think this process could take.
Well, we're, we're right now putting it on the agenda for, as an action item for next week. So this could be taken care of relatively quickly, but we have some phone calls to make to the state first. I think a lot of that's going to determine, and, and Ms. Chandler, you may be able to help with the state, you know, maybe with, you know, if they need you for something, to make yourself available for anything that they might need, regulatory things or anything like that. But I think if we can get this conversation to the state pretty quickly, I'm, I'm feeling a sense that this board is wanting to keep it here in Curry County. I won't speak for the board, but I'm, I'm getting that sense, so I think it could probably move along pretty quickly.
Okay. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. All right, do we have anything further?
Nope.
All right, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming, it was nice.